To order. For the record, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Finance that has been adjourned from December 21st, 2021. For the record, Monday, today is Monday, December 20th, 2021. Participating here at the City Hall Auditorium are members Ms. Pesky, Mr. Bayes and Mr. Wright. And attending via Zoom, I have Mr. Boynton, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Bushka. We are now at 6:03 PM and before we begin the regular meeting, could we stand and pledge the flag? Thank you. All right. Item one on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I see Mr. Farley here and we have no other public. I don't, is there anybody online? Public ways? Okay. Then I'll move right into item two. I'll entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 transfers and budget amendments as described in Controller's memo dated December 6th, previously approved by City Council on December 6th.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. And I heard Mr. Bushka. Are there questions on the transfers?
Any.
Yes.
Um. Just transfer into Corporation Council, $26,000.
I can't.
Corporation Council on the, um, on the second page. The second one down.
Yes. The 26.
From into Corporation Council. Can you enlighten why we needed to put money into Corporation Council?
Oh, I don't know. Off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
I see. No, that's fine. So we did have a number of tax appeals this year that were outsourced to outside council. And usually there's a pool of resources in the Corporation Council's line item to cover that. Those fees exceeded his line item. So this was a transfer to zero that line item out.
Right. I did know that. Yeah.
Um. And is related to that is the transfer to the tax collector?
Yes. For the adjustments that are made and we do budget, you know, a certain amount of money year over year. Some years, there are very few adjustments. So we're fine. This past year, the adjustments were running in favor of the taxpayer. Again, part of that being those tax appeals with a lower assessment, you know, the amount of taxes that had to be returned because they've been collected. So that was part of that certificates of correction and tax appeals.
And the, um, from contingency intention and benefit? Is that something about, I mean. We didn't, we didn't approve that separately typically.
Except at the end of the year when we do these, this is your opportunity to question it and approve it. So I, I don't, I don't have my sheets in front of me, but, um.
I apologize, I should have said.
No, that's fine. That's fine. From contingency. Oh, $8,503. Yes, I think when we closed out the year, whatever that small, that minor adjustment of the $8,500, we're recommending to the boards to balance those line items out that we use funds from contingency to be able to close that line item.
Yeah. So making that transfer actually just brought it to a zero balance. So there. I, you know, the, the ups and downs of all of the line items in that department. The 8503 brought it to a zero balance for the department as a whole.
Thank.
Other questions? I know Mr. Wright had several and I think I forwarded to you budget performance sheets. You got your answers? Okay.
I happen to see a lot of these transfer requests were for capital items. So I'm glad to see that we're, you know, is it a million, a million six was? And looks like most of it was capital, whether it was police department radios and things like that. So I'm glad to see that those projects are getting fulfilled. But that's, other than that, that's it.
Yes. And many of those are, this is something that Robin and I had discussed in the budget process, when we know that we're trying to sink funds into capital for those projects that are large scale, very expensive projects that we try to chip away at by making annual contributions. Those were held to the end of the year. I think going forward, right after budget adaption, Robin was thinking it might be better for us to do it early in the year, just so that we're moving them into those reserve accounts where they should be early.
And then you would see all of the activity out of the reserve.
Right. I was gonna say, cause everything was happening and now we see it versus you putting it there and then watching it dwindle as the year goes.
Right.
Right. I mean, either way, it's, you know, it's, it's still here, but I think that would be a, I agree, that would be a good idea.
So if there are to the screen, any questions on the transfers?
I, I just have a general question. The, the letter states, these entries are reflected in the FY 2021 audit. What's the status of the audit? Has it been completed?
We're just finalizing it. Can you hear me? I don't know.
Yes.
I can hear.
Okay. We are finalizing it. We did ask for an extension only because we have a couple of things remaining. And then once we can finalize that, just the review process takes a couple of weeks. So we should be done, you know, before the end of January. We shouldn't require our extension. From there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Final call for questions on this line, on this agenda. Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into item number three. Discussion business by department heads. So thank you, Ms. Pesky.
Second.
And second by Mr. Bayes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything you want to share tonight, Mr. Farley?
Well, also, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Anything you could think of to share this evening?
No.
Thank you.
Not in addition to the audit.
Anything from the City Clerk's office? All right. Well, then we'll move into item four. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by members of the Board of Finance.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bayes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're open. So I'll start on the screen. Anything this evening, Mr. Bushka?
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Mr. Boynton?
Uh, nothing for me, Mayor.
Mr. Anderson?
Just the first to say happy Christmas and looking forward to budget season coming up.
Oh, boy. Thank you, Ms. Pesky.
Welcome to Heather.
Yes.
I was saying to her that when she sent the, then it was the agenda. And then I needed to look back at it and then what was her name? If not, I didn't recognize the right away. Nothing else, Mayor. Happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes.
Nothing this evening, just Merry Christmas to everybody and soon enough it'll be budget season and we'll be back at it. So, uh, but enjoy the holiday while it's here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
No, just happy holidays. That's good.
All right.
I'll leave off the budget.
All right. Usually I hear a question every month from, it's usually Ms. Pesky or Mr. Bayes. Just to give you a brief update, we've had three new businesses open in the city of Torrington. Grand List obviously is how we increase our revenues. So we're pretty pleased. I did a ribbon cutting for Cafe Joy on Main Street. I also, just as a continual update on the Yankee Peddler Inn, we are still in the legal proceedings. We have a court date, I believe it's January 18th. However, I'd reach out to Jason Hospitality's today to see if there was any opportunity for us to meet before that date and just check in with each other on the status of the property. So hopefully we'll see some movement over the next few weeks on that one. Budgets. Amendments for fiscal year 22. Robin and I are working on those, as you'll recall, with the State Department of Education approval of the Board of Education's request for 2% of our ECS. We really were taking our time to see where we wanted to find those line items that, that might have been easy pickings for us to cut, but now want to hold on to because of potential need to freeze. So hoping that in January, we'll have that final document for you to approve. And and I guess that's really, that's probably all that I can think of at this point. Questions or anything I brought up? All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes.
Second.
And Mr. Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So our next meeting starts in 16 minutes. It's the joint meeting with the City Council for the presentation by Board of Education. So I guess if you want to sign off and then sign back on, it's the same meeting, right? Okay. Or if you want to just hang in with a live connection, it's entirely up to you. Yeah. Okay, let's do that.
Okay. See you guys in a couple of minutes.
Don't record yet. All right, we're recording. That's fine. I just want to do a quick mic check because our quorum is represented by those that are persist, participating via Zoom. So on the call, Mark Bushka, you can hear us okay?
Yes, I can.
Yes. Mr. Anderson? Can you hear us okay? You are muted. More importantly, he'd usually give me thumbs up. Mr. Boynton, you can hear us okay?
I can.
Okay. And Councilwoman Rowett, you can hear us okay? Good. Okay. I don't see Councilman Oliver on the call yet. Is he? Am I missing him? Or Councilman Kevin Arrow? And which is fine. We have our quorum, so it's not not like we can't proceed. So all right, let's start. Let me call this meeting to order. For the record, I'll name off who is participating in the joint meeting. So participating and representing the Board of Finance, I have Mark Bushka, Christopher Anderson, Lance Boynton, attending by Zoom. Here in the auditorium, we have Lorraine Pesky, James Wright and Christopher Bayes. So we have the full Board of Finance represented. Representing the council this evening via Zoom, I have Councilwoman Rowett. Attending here in the auditorium is Councilman Waldron, Councilwoman Hona and Councilman Menegia. So we do have a quorum and we can call this special joint meeting of the City Council and Board of Finance to order. For the record, today is Monday, December 20th, 2021. It is now 6:35 PM. Before we begin the meeting, could we all please stand and pledge the flag?
States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item number one on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public. Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
I heard Mr. Bayes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the boards at this time? This is the joint meeting of both. Okay. You know the drill.
Good evening. I brought notes so I stay on track so the mayor doesn't have to.
I'm gonna tell you.
It's really kind of goes along with the Board of Education, but the monies may end up coming out of the city site. I read last week, week before that the city may need to hire or another bus company to transport students back and forth to school. If the bus company is not fulfilling their obligation by contract, again, I use easy words and it's strictly business, fire them, go get a company that does. If they're not fulfilling their obligation, we should not have to go and hire another company so that their obligation is fulfilled. So we'd be paying twice in getting one service. So I'm not sure where that money would be coming from, but as the overseer of contracts, it needs to be corrected. Question? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. I, I don't think, did he read his name into the record? Is there? It's Kevin Hayes.
I'll start.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing and hearing that, we're going to move right into the purpose of the meeting this evening. All right. So item two is a review and discussion regarding resolution number 143-223 regarding the approval of an additional $20 million appropriation and bond authorization for the escalated cost in construction of the high school, middle school. This is a combination of an escalation of cost and a scope because of increase in enrollment. So I'm not sure from the Board of Education. Is it Ed or Mario or Sue? All right. So if the two of you want to, please, yeah, make yourself comfortable and you could just kind of walk everyone through what brings us to this point. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us and making adjustments to your schedule. So tonight you'll hear a little bit of a history on where we started and where we are and where we hope to be. We have members of the Design Team Slam here to answer any of your questions. So the bottom line is the project was approved pre-pandemic in the referendum for $159,575,000. And we were all very excited about that. It was overwhelmingly approved, 67% or so. So was it, it was, the voters spoke positively about the project. So since then, we've been doing a lot of work. We've obviously did preliminary designs. Everything, and I mean everything, it's pretty much dictated on state specifications as these guys here will tell you. And we find ourselves in a position where the, the money that was approved pre-pandemic is no longer efficient to deliver the schools, the type of school that we need to deliver to the student. Two things, two main factors of that were this year alone, there are 137 new students in grade seven through 12 that obviously were not here pre-pandemic, 68 alone from New York. So you'll see a handout, you'll see a bunch of handouts because that's what Mr. Aaron does. This guy right here, this white one explains to you that by state statutes, every student needs 172.71 square feet of space. So immediately, just, just from September to October of this year, the building had to increase 23,661 square feet at the construction cost of $525 a foot. Just those new students moving into town, you're looking at about $12.5 million increase, obviously not budgeted. No one from ONG could be here tonight, but Slam could speak to it. You guys know, you go to the gas station, you go to the grocery store. Everything has gone up. ONG estimates about 10 to 12% since we bid the job. About $80 million roughly, $90 million roughly in, in materials. So you're looking at another $9 million there. So just those two line items are $21 million. So we had to go back to the drawing board as we tell you a little bit about our enrollment, projected enrollments. We spoke to the state about that. And listen, I want to caution everybody that any real deviation from the schedule and the design would require us to go back to the state and the 85% would be off the table.
We met with the, a number of times, we met with the state, as you know, the fellow who was in charge is gone now. Costa. So we have another one, Noel Petra. Met with him three times. He said, any, if you go away from what you have, the $159 million, what we're saying, that you have to go back to the state and get a re-figure. And he says 85% is moving gone. So we said, we're being proactive and they, they like that. They complimented the mayor, they complimented the city, they complimented everybody that we're being proactive ahead of time. And we said, the 20 million is not your money soon, right now. It's the city's money. We're working with 159. If we need the 20 million, we'll, we'll have it there, which we may need, we probably wouldn't need it. But it's the city, the state is not going to touch that money. So we still have the 159. They agreed to that. We're going forward with that design. And the state has agreed to that. Finally, the state has agreed to pay progress payments. We had to go through a rough, rough thing with them because of the switch in, in the commissioners. They finally spent four hours, just sent them yesterday, 26 pages of invoices of how we figured it out. So hopefully the state will give the city the money that is deserved to them. Hopefully, he said, she said, hopefully by Christmas. Well, we'll see that. Okay.
And another important part of this is that if you remember the referendum passed, the reimbursement rate from the state was 62.8, 62.8% through some good work from Michelle Cook, we were able to get that to 85%. Ed will talk to you about those numbers. So.
Well, Bill Lindsey is here, so he can talk to those numbers to show you what, what was agreed to on the referendum and how with the 85%, even with the 20, 20 million more, we, he will show you that we're still saving $31 million.
From what, from what the voters approved.
What the voters approved.
Right. So that's the good news. So we come to you guys with hat in hand, basically. You'll see this, this handout right here, the bluish greenish. These are some of the things that had to be added because of additional enrollment, right? Some certain spaces had to be larger, nurses' offices had to be larger. We had to go to four waves in the cafeteria instead of three waves. Really Slam and ONG and, and the Building Committee pretty much considered every option. Now you'll also see a lot of negatives there, right? Of things that were eliminated in order to try to get that dollar amount where it needs to be, stands the $20 million, right? So the items covered in yellow would be put back into the project. Should the 20 mil, should the referendum be held and, and pass, of course. If they're not, if the referendum does not pass, everything in yellow will be eliminated and it's catastrophic. It's as far as we're concerned. And even still, on top of these yellow items, we're still $9 million over budget without the $20 million referendum. Basically, you know, they, they approved us to build a nice, a nice, well, a nice, nice Toyota Celica. And, um, and we've had to upgrade to a minivan, right? Because the, the school needs to be bigger. It needs, it, 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 we're required to have the square footage per student. And we hope both of these boards understand and we'll leave it to you guys to ask questions, either to Mr. Lindsey or the folks from Slam, should you need any clarification? Eddie?
Yeah. As you go through the handout, if you want to go by the handout, the first page is that overview, program area and value management and so forth. The second page is again, what Mario has stated is that as of October 1, we have 137 students. That's only seven through 12. If you go through nine, that's seven through 12. Out of that, seven through 12, 26 are from New York. 76 are from Connecticut moving in. 13 are from out of the country coming here. Five are returning from homeschooling and six, 16 are from other states coming in. Those actual are as October 1, 137. If you add K through 12, 276 kids as of October. 63 from New York. So I think we're going to have to have a New York deli coming soon because everybody wants pastrami, I would assume. So if, if that's, that's the problem we have, a double problem.
Good problem.
Good problem.
Yeah.
People coming in, kids coming in, and then COVID hits, everybody knows steel is up. Everything's up. Roofing is, materials are up, gasoline is up. The second page you have is what the allowable square footage is. And the net, net gross square footage, you get net gross net. So we're under from the state by 4,500 square feet, which is good. We don't have to ask them for a waiver. So we're good with that. Next page is just, it was the old increase and decreases, the up to date one, which the Building Committee looked at, was the one I handed out separately. If you go through that, you'll get where it says the budget summary, which is this page. And that shows you that we are $9 million variance.
Without the 20.
Without the 20.
So all these yellow items would go away and we'd still have to find $9 million more.
Right.
Very, very, very difficult.
Yeah. The next eight, six pages that this is how, how the Building Committee and, and the board have gone through where to make the cuts and how much is each cut. That was a, not, uh, not pleasant because of, of what's happening. One, one thing we are, again, the state says we're being proactive. A number of school systems I've been in touch with who are in a difficult situation because they never thought that enrollment and pandemic would hit. And now they don't know where they're going to get the money. They've already, you know, bid it out before they thought. So we've been, at least the state realizes that we're the. So we've been, at least the state realizes that we're the only community that's been proactive in saying before we go out to bid, and before we do this, we have the design, we, we, we looking for that money. The next long page is again, is the enrollment. Remember, we did the enrollment before, we had to put it into the state. You have to have eight years of enrollment. The top eight year, when we did it before in twenty twenty, was fifteen seventy one. As you can see with the new enrollment, the, the top number was seventeen sixty three. We are not building a seventeen sixty three school. If we built a seventeen sixty three school, that's a hundred and ninety two kids more than the fifteen seventy one. At a hundred and seventy two dollars per kid is thirty three thousand square feet versus twenty three thousand square feet. At five twenty five, it's seventeen point four million dollars. So the committee decided, the state has agreed, that we've taken an average of sixteen fifty. As you can see, seventeen sixty three was the high year, that's the year we proposed to move in, and every year after that, it goes down. So the state looked at that and said, you've been proactive, we're taking the average because they don't want to pay more and we don't want to have a huge building and have it, so to speak, empty. So if you look at that, that's the way. And people say, well, it's only seventy nine kids you have that are different between fifteen seventy one and sixteen fifty. That's correct, we took the average. If you take the average, that's seventy nine kids, seventy nine kids times a hundred and seventy two dollars and seventy one cents gives you thirteen thousand six hundred and forty four square feet, times five twenty five, it's seven million, seven point one million dollars. So because we were being conservative, looking at it with the state, instead of twelve million, if we use that, it's seven million. So we already saved some money in doing that with the state. There's a hundred and thirty seven, it was the first time we went around with the state and they said, we went through that. The next page is the analysis of the local share. Again, uh Mario and I worked on some wording with, with Michelle Cook. Uh, and uh, we put it into legislation, it's there, everybody got the letter. Eighty five percent, twenty three million. Savings of fifty million dollars there. But again, there's ineligible and so forth, so, and, and Bill can speak of, of what the total bond is, which is gonna be less than what was proposed in the beginning. That's the uh thirty one thousand square feet, looking at it.
A lot of info.
Yes.
And I, just a quick question, and then I'm gonna open the floor. Um, on the enrollment um projections, um, I know that the building committee and the Board of Education reviewed, it was a full report.
Correct.
This also included projection of increase in students for the potential housing developments?
Yes, yes.
And so these numbers do reflect the potential growth in student, school age children.
Correct.
Should both of those projects occur?
Correct.
All right, so you're still?
That was uh, that was the two uh, which we have here, two housing projects.
Yeah.
And, and they put in the number of kids that were gonna be in each housing project.
And they track births and, it's very detailed.
Very methodical, yep. All right, I'm gonna open the floor for questions on what you've heard. And then I'm going to turn the floor over to um Bill Lindsay from um Unistat, who can um go through the uh impact analysis. Um, and I also have on this call Sandra Dawson, who is our bond counsel, who did both between Bill and Sandra, really pulled a rabbit out of their hats here, getting all this stuff put together as quickly as we did. Um, this is what happens when we're all, you know, working towards a common goal and I appreciate that. So questions from the floor?
So a quick comment, Mayor.
Yes.
Ed and Mario, if, you know, next time you have this much information, please get us this in advance. I mean, it's a lot of information to consume before voting on something. So I just ask if, if you're presenting this much information, to just please try to get to us even a day or two ahead of time so we have some time to, to take a look at these things, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would add also that these documents um I have been reviewed at the building committee level a few times, correct?
Yes.
So, all right, um, yes, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Cavanero.
Yeah, just for the sake of this conversation um and discussion going forward, can we get, essentially, the point is that there's two budget drivers that are, that are here, right? It's the increase in the number of students and it's the increase in the building cost, correct? Could you give us, uh, could you give us those two numbers, uh, your, your best estimate of how much of this twenty million, estimated twenty million dollars is related to um the, the increase in number of students and how much is related to the estimate of the building cost? Just so we're all working with kind of the same reference points?
The uh, just the students, as I said, with the seventy, with the seventy nine is seven point one million is only for students. That's, that's it. And uh, they're still working on, really, the building costs would be approximately nine million dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somewhere between eight and nine million. Yeah.
Again, we're gonna tighten up everything, go out to bid.
Yeah.
You know, get everything going and uh.
I get that, I get that. So it's nine million over the one fifty nine?
Correct.
Okay, so now I think anybody at least has the same metric here, thank you, man.
I would also add um timeline, you know, if, if anybody's feeling rushed. We know from the date this um construction um project was approved, shovel in the ground within.
Two years, right.
So we're already one year, you know, getting, closing in on one year on that. So that's the other reason for the rush to get this out to referendum so that those final design and bid documents can be pulled together and released.
Right, if you remember, Alvo Kitek was applied for their grant at a hundred and fifty three million. They could not get a shovel in the ground for two years. They lost all that money. We do not want to lose that money because then it goes back to the legislature and infinite wisdom would not give us the eighty five percent, I would assume. So it's not, the state statute says, you know, you have two years to put a shovel in the ground.
More questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. Pesky, give me my glasses.
So we're doing this now, but we won't have to go to the legislature?
Well, we.
I, I didn't.
Yeah, we uh we're not going to the legislature now, okay? But we intend to do the same thing as Mario and I did to get everything, the additional money, to be eighty five percent reimbursed. But we're taking the conservative approach where if we don't get the money, it's, it's twenty, if we don't get the eighty five percent, it's still twenty million dollars. And that twenty plus the other money is less than what you voted on in the previous referendum because of the eighty five percent.
That part I understand. But what I'm not understanding is how are we avoiding going, not, not how are we avoiding the if, if you do go to the legislature, then they go back to look at the whole thing all over again?
No.
Oh, I thought that's what you said.
No, that, that's if we, if we changed anything. If we changed the, if we changed the building, what was given to them in advance, they, and then they say, well, you'll have to, you'll have to go back, we're not changing anything.
Right, but if we're increasing the square footage.
We're just building the same building, but it's costing us.
More because of also, because they understand about the number of students.
But we're still gonna fit them in that same building, we're not really increasing.
Yeah, we, we're increasing it from uh about twenty thousand square feet.
Well, then, then how are we not going back to the legislature?
We are going.
We're not seeking the grant.
Right, the hundred and fifty nine million five seventy five sticks, right? So if we, if we said to the state, we want a hundred and seventy five million, brand new ballgame.
Right.
Uh.
If we say the state, right, well, what, we're going.
On the state side, we're still going for that hundred and fifty nine five seventy five.
On the legislative side.
This is coming, you anticipate it coming from Florida?
Correct.
And that's still less than.
Correct.
What?
Correct.
Had it been originally.
Right, we took the.
Would have been the, the city's obligation.
Correct.
Right, we, we got that taxpayer obligation notwithstanding the interest, because I'm not, I'm not savvy about that. But we got that taxpayer obligation down to about twenty three million dollars when we got the eighty five percent. Um, down from seventy four, I believe it was, seventy four million to twenty three, so it's a significant savings. Now, we're still gonna be well below the seventy four, but we're not gonna be at the twenty.
Right.
I just, I, I hear Ms. Pesky saying, and now it's got me thinking, so if we're increasing the budget of this project and we're increasing the square footage, nothing has to be redone with the original hundred and fifty nine million dollar building approval plan? That's what you're saying, right?
The state says, we're gonna build that building for a hundred and fifty, we're saying we're gonna build it for a hundred and fifty nine million. They said, what about the twenty million? That's not your money, state, that's the city's money.
Right, but if we ask them to reimburse that portion, then it does become their money, right?
Just like in, the legislature has the power, okay? Just like we did, this, the, there's two parts of the government, the legislation part and the bureaucratic part. Okay, I'll call it that way, sorry.
Yeah.
So, okay, the bureaucratic part slows everything down, makes us go through hoops, especially with the program, project payments and so forth. We told them, don't worry about the twenty million, it's not your money, it's the city's money. We're building that school for a hundred and fifty nine million dollars. If this, well, hopefully the city will pass the twenty million that goes in. So that's the bureaucrats, we go to legislature, just like we did before, and said to them, we, we, we're a uh alliance district, we're, we're working with the, with, with the uh colleges. We can use, and that has been done in others, Noah Walk did it, Danbury did it, Stanford did it.
Right.
Why not Torrington? And we did it, and we got eighty five percent.
I'm just asking, they, because I just don't want to see a scenario where they revoke the hundred and fifty nine million dollar plan and that reimbursement rate because of the increase in building costs and square footage.
Right.
If you're saying that that can't be revoked, then that's.
It's, it's in the state statutes.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
To do with the bureaucrats.
Right, no, I, I understand what you're saying, and I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that that.
And we would not put the city in that, in that frame.
Right, yeah, I just.
Been living here forty three years, I've never done that for the city on the projects that I've been doing, Mario and I. Again, when we did the fields, we got the money from the state, boom, three million dollars.
Yeah, I understand that wouldn't be our intention and wouldn't be, you know, I just wanna, you know, I just wanna be wary of that.
We're gonna try.
That's, that's what it is, it's an attempt.
Attempt.
But I think if you guys all go uh with the mentality into this of, it's gonna cost us twenty million dollars, we're gonna be all pleasantly surprised. We believe when we get the eighty five percent.
Yeah.
Reimbursed.
Oh, yeah, and that would be fantastic.
I think that's that best case, worst case scenario. Best case, worst case scenario, it's twenty million dollars that the taxpayers are paying to, to build the school that was planned along a little bit, uh, modified to accommodate the additional students. Best case scenario is in that legislative session, they say, yes, you could get reimbursement on that second request twenty nine.
My, my concern is just them saying, okay, well, now, yes, we can reimburse you on that extra twenty million, but now that's not the original building project that was, they can't do that, right? That's, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, good, yeah.
Because that one fifty nine five seventy five is written in stone.
Okay, all right, that, that, that was.
And we just have to have.
Chris, if that ever happened, we would say, keep your twenty million.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I'm asking, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and, and we would not put the city in danger.
No, I know that wouldn't be fair.
And the only thing, that's why I mentioned the two years, that's why we're here tonight, that's why we're trying to hold this long because the only thing that could jeopardize that is we don't get the shovel in the ground.
It's time.
So um, uh, and I will tell you that uh the building committee, um, the superintendent, uh, myself, uh, I think uh Councilwoman Cavanero, uh, Dan Farley, we're all on the call with Michelle Cook and representatives from the state to discuss that twenty million. We are assured that that original one fifty nine five seventy five is secured and done. It's the twenty million that, uh, that we're looking at.
I, I'm not against that hanging in limbo, but I just don't want the original. I, I don't want this to ruin, you know, what we already did, that, that, that's all.
All right, I have a couple of hands um on the screen and so um a few hands. So I'll start with Councilwoman Rowett, you had some questions?
I think Christopher Anderson had his up first, like early, so I will defer to his questions and then and then I would like to make a comment.
Right, you don't have to be polite with each other, jump in.
Well, if he's have technical problems, which, you know, he's the younger generation.
Right, that's, that's always the thing, it's very easy to unmute yourself by accident, but never on purpose. Um, no, I just had, had two thoughts during the, the presentation. One, um, I'm pretty sure you guys were good enough to say this three times already, but just to ask a fourth time, the nine million dollar swing, you're saying that, I, just to confirm, that's if we don't approve that, the, the two million? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
But.
No.
No.
We're still gonna be nine million dollars over no matter what we do, right?
We're, 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 we've cut drastically and on top of, we need to cut nine million more. We're not done cutting. If the referendum money doesn't come through, we have cut all these yellow highlighted items.
Right.
And we need, still need to cut nine million more. And it's.
No matter what.
It's, it's, it's terrible.
Got it, and understanding, I mean, we all, we all know enough about construction and, and home improvement to know that it's always gonna keep changing. If we're going to build a slightly bigger school and we know costs are going up, what is our feeling about going to referendum a third or fourth time? I mean, I think, it's a better phrase, if we're gonna go back to the voters and say, hey, listen, costs went up, is twenty enough? Should we be talking now about phrasing it in such a way that, hey, you know, supplies are gonna change, we're asking for twenty now to make sure we can accommodate the kids that we need to accommodate? But I, I, I'm fearful that we'll end up chasing, chasing our tail a little bit on that because it's gonna be a long project and it's gonna, I, I'm afraid it's gonna change again.
Once the bidding process starts, the prices will be locked in.
Yeah.
Um, in, in that bidding process, not to bore you with the, with the um the technical, technical terms of it, but there'll be an enabling package in March, uh, which will help us get a little bit back on track. Really, an enabling package is, is just um some work that will be done during the summer, so it's not a mess. I'm talking about this coming summer. Uh, it will bid in March, it'll be some site work, some pilings being driven into the earth.
Parking.
Uh, temporary parking, stuff you just can't do with the kids in session. So that enabling package will actually be bid in March and the work will be done June, July and August. Then the actual large bid, just whatever happens with the referendum will still be bid, we believe uh Septemberish? Yeah, about Septemberish, um, and, and the work would start unfortunately later than we wanted, but I mean, who knew we were getting into two years ago, right? So to answer your question, no, we won't be going back two or three times, we don't even want to go back once. We were thrilled to get eighty five percent, um, and, you know, and save fifty million dollars. But we're still thrilled to tell the taxpayers, we're gonna get the school that we really need. And we promise, we promise separate libraries, right? We promise separate lunchroom. We don't want the high school kids mixing with the, with the uh seventh and eighth graders.
We promised them athletic fields.
We promised them athletic fields. Without the twenty million dollars, you are getting a stripped down version that none of us are gonna be happy about.
No, that makes sense, and I, I appreciate you the rephrasing it that way, because I think we're all in agreement. I mean, you know, one, one, one referendum is a lot and two is a really lot. Um, I just, I, I hate to see a third, um, but thank you, I, I understand.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman.
Well, to Chris's point, um, you know, I would object for going back to the voters three or four times. And thank you for your work on this, Ed and Mario, um, and I do appreciate the information the mayor said today. Um, just in terms of what the. And I do appreciate the information the mayor said today, just in terms of what the, and I think that's gonna be the next presentation, so I'll wait for that. But there's a lot. I wish Representative Cook was here and, you know, she has certainly enough tenure in the legislature, but there's a lot of, and Ed used the word hopeful and if a few times, you know, and the bureaucracy is is also in the legislature as well for that eighty five percent, which probably would be in the bonding bill in this next session. I'm assuming I'm correct on that. So I, you know, it sounds also like your plan B, if none of this happens, you know, the voters have supported a hundred and fifty nine million. And that's your plan B, to go back to that number and work backwards, unfortunately, with the expenses, the increase of expenses that you've had. But I'm always, and Ed, I'm just curious, in your years of doing these projects, how many times have you ever had to go back to the voters for a second referendum?
And in this day and age is so different, I I don't think I have.
No, and that's, you know, in all due respect, that's my worry. You did an incredible job. I supported it. You know, as you know, that it's a worry. There'll be lots of questions as representatives of our constituents. You know, what are we doing? And so the message, whatever you're you're hoping to do or present the voters has to be much more succinct and in line with what exactly the reasons are you're going back to referendum, because this is, I think, highly unusual to do a second referendum. It's a large project, and I think we're all hopeful. My other question, and you know, there are lots of information, Ed, that you sent to us, which we, you know, I appreciate. But the work that you're putting into this is is monumental, and I don't want you to think it's not appreciated. It's just, one, there's the ifs with the legislature in ensuring that, you know, eighty five percent will be put into the bond package. And two, you know, assuming that we pass this tonight, that there'll be a referendum in November, and the people of Torrington will support a second request. But but I I understand your plan B, going back to the one fifty nine. You know, you continue with the project. It's not like it's dead in the water. So I think those are, I have no questions. It's mostly my comments, concerns, and worries.
Okay. And just, I I think I heard you say referendum in November. The plan is this referendum will happen on January twenty eighth, is it, twenty fifth?
I did not, I did not understand that. So you're.
Yeah, in the documents that were sent out with the agenda, the motions and resolution, it is clear. Now, again, I I just want to stress the reason we're all here and we're doing this quickly is we've got to get that shovel in the ground within two years with bidding this project and then doing that enabling package so that we can get that shovel in the ground. They need to know sooner than later. They need to know yesterday whether or not this twenty million dollars is going to happen. Otherwise, they're back at the drawing board and they're doing more cutting. So, yes, January twenty fifth.
So is that, it's not actually in the motion, the third and fourth motion here. There's, I don't see a date.
It's in the supporting documents, but it's on the motion. But if if we could add it to the motion, I think.
Yes, when I call the motion, we'll bring that in.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, I see Mr. Bushka had his hands up.
Yes. Just to clarify, let's say that it's a hundred sixty million roughly, the original. We were responsible for fifteen percent and the state was paying eighty five percent.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so fifteen percent of one sixty is approximately twenty four million.
Right.
And we'd have to add another twenty million if we go, if this gets passed. So the city's portion will be forty four million.
Yes.
Roughly, yeah.
Roughly. So the original, what was the original, when the original referendum was passed, what was the expected reimbursement rate from the state?
Sixty two point eight.
So we were gonna, the city was gonna be responsible for thirty seven point two percent of one hundred sixty million. So that's still less than the forty four million. That's still more than the forty four million.
Right.
Forty four million is still less than what was approved at the original referendum.
The city's share was about seventy four.
Four million, right.
So that's really the message, right?
Yeah, that's what I just wanted to clarify that, that.
Right.
I was understanding that correctly. So we're still gonna spend less than the original anticipated referendum was voted at.
Correct, by by quite a bit.
So in summary, we're gonna get a hundred eighty million dollar building for forty four million.
Yeah.
Plus interest.
Twenty four percent, correct?
Yeah.
Of re, how how much are you factoring for non-reimbursable?
Right now, two point one million.
Okay, so one percent, one and a half percent? Okay.
And they figured that in, Bill got it and all of that.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that.
So other questions, Councilwoman Hona?
So speaking to Councilwoman Ruette's comments about being succinct, if you really succinct, we have a lot to help voters understand sort of what's at stake. And so I think we know the why is COVID and building costs, and we're a little bit of a victim of our own successes as a daughter, as the mom of a freshman in the high school. I'm thrilled that she's in the biggest high school class we've had in a long time. That's a good thing. But we certainly have to address that. But I just want to make sure I understand the the sort of what's at stake if we were to vote no in a referendum like this or to not put it forward to a referendum. So these yellow lines, I I know that you've kind of painstakingly gone through the making our building materials more affordable and things like that that feel more painless. This must be why you kind of stopped reducing things in the budget, because I'm looking. You mentioned, you know, mixing middle schoolers and high schoolers in the same library. And you and you mentioned it would be that the athletic field would just be like unusable, right? They'd be unfinished.
Well, they would.
They would, well, the athletic fields are getting a bunch of fill from the parking lot area. So the they're gonna be raised about sixteen inches or so. So they'll be graded and seeded. But you won't have the backstops, the fencing, the clay in fields for for softball. It's that's the reality of it.
And I know that when I was, when we were going through the first referendum and when I was talking to voters, a lot was made about the pathways programs. And so there wouldn't be preschool, a classroom available to do the preschool pathway.
No, that the preschool would move to another building.
It would be out of the high school.
Out of the high school.
And and there wouldn't be an auto shop. It wouldn't, like, that wouldn't be able to be in the budget either, right?
That would be an alternate.
Okay, and security, which there was a lot of kids creeped out of the top last week, so. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, without saying too much.
On security, we do.
Security would be reduced.
Yeah.
From where it should be. It still would be very secure.
Right, very secure.
Because that's a state requirement, so we have to meet those.
Whatever the state requires, we have to do.
Right.
We were looking for maximum, you know, with the level of the state, we want, we're gonna go above that to make sure. We met with the fire department and the police department. They have some things that they want, which we can't tell you because.
Unless you go in executive session, in which case you could.
That, okay, so these are some pretty, that's, I just, I think that would be important, if we were to go to referendum, to hope voters understand what's really at stake.
I mean, you're, you're, you know, there's a lot of pain. There's athletic pain. There's the library pain. There's pain to the to the arts, to the band rooms, to the actual art rooms themselves. There's the actual look of the building, you know, eliminating roof screens and and, you know, the athletic fields and
And that's still not enough to get you to one hundred and sixty million.
Correct.
From all the pain you see on here, we still need nine million dollars. It's gonna get really bad.
Right. Councilwoman Ruette's hand is still raised. Did you have another question or comment? Okay. Ms. Pesky from Board of Finance.
Torrington did approve a second referendum when we renovated the high school.
Yes, for.
I wasn't involved, so I don't know.
I was. Longest building committee ever in the city.
They still haven't closed it.
I I knew there were some veterans here, Lorraine. Thank you.
Floor still.
So Torrington, Torrington does, will do it. If they understand, Torrington will, and if we explain it, and I I think the way that that Mr. Bushka just put it together really very simply. And and when you look at what we were going to be responsible for back at the sixty.
Right. Sixty.
Eight. Um, that that this that still does make sense.
So one of the things that we talked about when we met a week ago, it feels like a month ago, when we first started talking about bringing this forward, is the explanatory text, which is that document that does exactly what Councilwoman Hona has done, what Mr. Bushka has said, you know, what the building committee and Board of Ed have worked on is very succinctly says, you know, in November of twenty twenty, when this was voted on, the taxpayers' portion was anticipated to be seventy four million. Worst case scenario, with the additional twenty million, we're still well below that seventy four million. We're close to forty seven million. If we get the eighty five percent reimbursement on that second twenty million, it's even lower.
That's why we're taking the conservative approach.
Conservative all the way. Yep.
You know, we don't want to tell them, oh, we're automatically gonna get it, and and it's only gonna cost you X, which is, I would never do that.
What what is the timing of that going to the legislature? Is there any point?
Well, the session begins the first week of February. Another reason we wanted to get this referendum scheduled in January is so the state will know that this, that the voters have approved this. Then the work happens on the state level. Modification or amendment to the application can be made. And that's where our state delegation really has to work for us.
And is there any point, that's why I was wondering, is there any point, or what is the point in time for the Board of Finance and the City Council to write a letter, a joint letter in support?
So we've, we've already engaged the states, I can't remember, was it Candelara? Who who would this, who were the two gentlemen on the call?
The two, oh.
One was from OFA, the Office of Financial Administration.
Yeah.
So we, that conversation happened last Wednesday or Thursday. They're already queued up. Representative Cook has already reached out. That letter, this board can add, and going that to the special agenda item. But on the regular council, the council can add an agenda item instructing us to send that letter. The session begins, as I said, I think it's February seventh or ninth. So we would have time to get that done.
And I, if if we all decide to do this, I would support the Board of Finance joining in on that.
Councilman Kevin Arrow.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. In in considering this this request, a couple of things. First, as far as this being a second referendum, I would just like to remind people of the historical of of this historical significance of the fact that this project was decided upon to and and initiated well before the pandemic, okay? This is a generational pandemic. The consequences of that are are continuing to ripple through the world economy, and there was no way of anticipating the many, many, many disruptions that were going to occur because of that. So, yeah, these are not normal times. They will not be normal times for a long time. Having said that, the reason, from my perspective, the reason the request was made for a new high school had to do with a number of factors. Clearly, the age of the old high school. Clearly, the fact that for whatever, I don't want to hear people saying, well, it should have been better maintained, better maintained. Those are all true. Those are all true, but that's that's water under the bridge. That's many, 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 many iterations of budgets and leaders within our city, cutting back capital costs for a whole host of reasons. And we were where we were two years ago with this project. We needed a new high school. We were also dealing with the historic fact that we had increasing attrition rate. Kids from middle school were not, were dropping out and not going to high school. There was a whole bunch of reasons why that was happening. And the goal of this new project, of this new high school, was to integrate those two communities, the middle school and the high school, into one educational facility that would, in many ways, both the, both consciously and unconsciously, deliberately and subtly, allay the fears of many, many parents of their kid, middle school kids going to Torrington High School. That is a huge issue that needed to be addressed in very specific ways within our community, okay? So we needed a new high school. The idea of combining two different cohorts of middle school into one made an awful lot of sense. It continues to make an awful lot of sense as a strategic goal for where we want this, what we want this educational system to do for our city. Okay, anybody who knows, any adult, and certainly any city leader, has to know that when we try to attract businesses and families to Torrington, they ask for what? How much is housing cost? And what's your educational system like? They'll ask for taxation. They'll ask for the down, blah, 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 your restaurants and all that. But what they really are making those decisions on, what they're Googling and looking at, okay, they want to see the school. They want to know where their kids are going to be going to the school, and we need this. And if we don't get this, and because of those two driving factors, everybody here, and everybody's listening, everybody will be considering this, knows that one of the consequences of all these people moving into Torrington and bringing their kids is that our housing value has gone up. We have benefited from this, okay, individuals. Nothing happens in a vacuum, okay? So good and bad. So now we've got a lot of, you know, new students moving in, and that has to be accounted for. There was no way of, no way of knowing that COVID would produce this influx of students from many areas, okay? And that they would have to be accounted for within this scheme. Nobody could have anticipated how much, nobody could have anticipated how much building costs went up. But anybody and everybody listening to this proposal has to know that when you go to Lowe's, Home Depot, Stop and Shop, everything is much, much more expensive. So that has to be accounted for. That's what this extra twenty million dollars. If we don't do this to to Councilwoman Hona's remarks, what she is trying to say is if you eliminate all of these things that have to be eliminated, what we will end up at the end of this building project is a one hundred and fifty nine million dollar project that will be substandard, okay? That is what this will be. It will be a project that we in Torrington, in any honest and thoughtful person will see as substandard, below what we need to be targeting for our educational system and our town. We want this school to be a magnet. We want it to be, we want it to attract the kind of businesses and the kind of families that we want in this town, and this is one of the primary ways. There's no way around it. People have to vote for this. We need that additional money to deliver the school that the people approve. I would just like everybody to I would just like everybody to remember that, that the project that was, and the design of the project that was laid out for approval a year ago, this additional twenty dollars, twenty million dollars gets that project back on the track, okay? So it's, there's no fun and games. There's no monkey business going around here. It's not trying to slip in some new stuff that wasn't accounted for. We're just trying to give you the school and the citizens of Torrington, the school system, that they actually voted to approve. Okay, that's what this money represents, and that's why we have to do it quickly, and we are looking for, at least I am, and I know the mayor is. We are looking for support from the leaders of this town to actually step up and do everything they can to help us get this twenty million dollars approved and then go forward in the most efficient and expeditious way we can. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman. Questions?
Questions? There are just one closing.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bass.
One closing comment. I think that it is important, and Mr. Kevin Arrow has a point, you know, number one, we did, you know, we we've got to see this project through, and we all have our individual gripes about certain things in here, and 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 we can go to the building committee with those gripes. But at the end of the day, and this is what I said last time, you know, we voted on the referendum and and why I voted in favors, because at the end of the day, I think this goes beyond a a board of six and a board of six to decide that this is going to be the, as much as we're all. to decide that this is going to be the, as much as we're all taxpayers, this is going to be the taxpayers at large footing this bill, not just us. So it, it's important that we let this decision go to the taxpayers, but more importantly, that we educate the taxpayers on, on some of the things that we talked about tonight. So that's, those are just some important things I, you know, want the fellow board members to know and the council members and everybody watching is to, is number one, that do our job to educate everybody. And number two, you know, when we have these concerns, let's bring them to the Building Committee about certain things we're adding or subtracting. But, um, you know, I just don't think that should take away from, from giving the taxpayers this decision tonight. So that's my closing comments. Thank you.
All right. So we've talked about the numbers a little bit. If there are no questions, no further questions to the Building Committee. Bill Lindsey from Unistat is here. Bill has done all of our bonding and borrowing for the city for the last eight years. I don't know how many years before that. And, oh, I see, Mr. Boynton, you raised your hand. Did you have a question for? Okay, never. I'm sorry.
No, no.
It was a false positive. Okay. So, um, Bill, if you wanted to maybe come to the microphone here at the podium, and Heather, if you could pull Bill's presentation up, and then Bill can just walk us through the highlights of the budgetary impact analysis. I mean, we've thrown some numbers out here, but Bill did commit them to paper for us. And I believe everybody got his presentation this morning. Okay.
All right. So good evening. Again, my name is Bill Lindsey. I hope you can hear me through the mask.
You can.
I represent the firm of Unistat Services. We're out in Madison, Connecticut. And we have been, as the mayor indicated, the city's financial advisor for debt for around ten years. So if you wouldn't mind going to the, to the next page. So what, what we were asked to do was to take a look at really two scenarios here. So the first would be, you know, successful passage of the additional twenty million dollars of spending. But then if the, if, if the state would, would find a way to reimburse at the eighty-five percent on the, on the eligible cost within that additional twenty million is going to be what we call scenario one. And then the second, the second scenario would be is if the state did not reimburse at all for the twenty million and the, and the full twenty million became the city's obligation, what that would look like. So you have in essence a worst case and a best case scenario. But before we get to that, in order to really give you an overall comprehensive view, what, what, what we did is what the same thing we did back in May of last year is to walk you through the city's existing debt as well as some of the other major projects that are going on currently, on so that you, you get a full, a full, full understanding of what the debt picture would look like. So the first slide, the first slide number two is on the left-hand side, those first three columns represent the city's existing bond and general fund debt service. Okay? And then on the principal side, it's about twenty-seven million with interest, about thirty-two million. And, and that's what is on the books right now. What's recently come on in, with, with, in February of twenty twenty-one is that there is a share of improvements at the wastewater treatment facility that is being repaid from the general fund. So from general taxation. So what we've done is we've incorporated those in to the current debt load. So you can see on the three columns on the right-hand side, what the total debt picture looks as it is today. And so again, that increases to about forty-one and a half million dollars in principal. With interest, it's about forty-nine point seven million dollars. So then if you would go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So then continuing with that same thought to give us a comprehensive picture, in, in two thousand and eighteen, the city did pass a thirty-five-million-dollar referendum for infrastructure improvements. So roads, bridges, sidewalks. And so there still remains three more borrowings that were originally planned for that. So we're going to layer that in next to get us to, to what the projected debt would be once, once those borrowings are complete. So again, we took the same numbers that we carried forward from the prior slide. We're adding in here three roughly seven-million-dollar borrowings to fulfill the, the rest of the city's intent for the infrastructure improvements. There's a million dollars in here for animal shelter project that, 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 if the, if the city were to undertake that as approved in the referendum, that would add to it. And what that does is that brings the total principal and interest outstanding to about seventy-nine point three million. So then we'd be adding about, call it twenty-nine and a half million with interest, bringing the total to seventy-nine point three. Okay? And then that really gets us to the starting point then of the analysis for the school portion. So if you would go to the next slide for me here. So again, this is the one of two scenarios. Scenario one being eighty-five reimbursement, eighty-five percent, excuse me, reimbursement on all eligible costs for the full twenty million, the, the whole hundred and seventy-nine and a half million dollar project. If you go to slide five. So here now what you have is this would be the financing plan for, for that scenario. So here again, what we've done, similar to what you saw earlier with respect to the infrastructure referendum, we're phasing in the debt over a number of bond issues. Okay? Again, here, you know, we'd be looking at, call it twenty-nine million dollars of borrowing on the city's behalf. We don't want to take that out all in one upfront issuance because it's going to have immediate budget effect. So in order to smooth in or as gradually as possible, bring on in increments the debt for this project, we've proposed a series of three bond and note issues that would take place. Before and after those three bond and note issues, there is a temporary borrowing in, will be March of this year, part of which was to reimburse the city for expenses that have been incurred to date. I think you heard Mr. Arum saying that the, the state money is going to start to fall for reimbursement, but there's still that fifteen percent that's the city's responsibility needs to be reimbursed. So that would, that would be taking place in this March. And then in the three successive marches, there would be borrowings, both short-term and long-term borrowings to fund the city's peace. And then I would add, there are two note issues at the end here that are between seventeen and a half and eighteen million. The state is now withholding eleven percent of their, of their, of their grant to, to issuers in the form of this withholdings or retainage, they call it. And so we need to account for that here in the, in the borrowings. Because again, if, if, if they're going to, if this is going to be eighty-five percent of, of a hundred and eight, of a hundred, you know, seventy-nine million dollars, it's a significant amount. Okay? So we, we want to make sure that we've accounted for that. And I, and I know it's a little difficult to read on the screen, but I, I'll, I'll, I'll point out that the short-term borrowings, the temporary borrowings that are done, part of which are for the state's share of the project costs. We are going to capitalize those costs into the bond issues. Okay? So again, we're trying to limit what the budgetary impact is to, to the city's budget, and so we will, we will capitalize those costs. It's similar to like if you were, and you're refinancing your whole mortgage, you want to roll the closing costs into the borrowing amount. That's in essence what we're doing here to, to, to help offset some of the near-term impact. So I'll, I'll point out, you know, the total cost here, again, this is scenario one, assuming that there is a full eighty-five percent reimbursement on the additional twenty million dollars of spending. With interest, the, the city's share would be forty-six and a half million dollars, and that's in the far right green column. If you would go to the next slide, please. So again, here, this is a summary of what we just showed you on the prior slide. So the first column on the left is the existing debt, including the two thousand and eighteen, the balance of those two thousand and eighteen referendum projects. Then in green again is the proposal under this scenario, total forty-six and a half with interest over twenty-three years, what the total debt would, debt would look like. You know, I'll point out here that, you know, the, the debt service, we're, we're trying to bring this on gradually. So the current year debt service is, is about four point two million dollars. It rises to a peak in two thousand and twenty-eight of about eight and a half million dollars. But again, it's allowing a number of years for the city's grant list to grow, to help offset mill rate impact, which we'll show you next. It's helping the city's overall budget to grow, which will help, um, offset what the percentage of the, of the bu, the budget that's going to, to fund debt service. So then if you go to the next slide. So now here, what we've done is we've given you, first, we're going to give you what the mill rate impact is in mills, and then we're going to give you what the tax impact is. So again, those same, the first three columns are the same, the same debt service numbers you just showed previously. The columns on the right are the mill rate associated with that. And so what we've basically done is we've taken the city's current grant list and then said, okay, based on that, based on the city's current grand list, what would the mill rate be for, for the new debt? To, and, and again, because we're talking about phasing in the borrowings, twenty-year borrowings, three, three series of bonds being issued, we're looking at a twenty-three-year time horizon rather than throw twenty-three numbers out there. What I think that the, the number in the bottom row is an average over that twenty-three-year period. So in order to, to simplify things, if we look at just what the average mill rate would be over that period of time, in this scenario, it's one point zero two mills. So about a mill on average, again, it'll start out gradually, just like the debt service does, increase to a peak year, which is two thousand and twenty-eight, and then decline thereafter. The importance of that decline is, gives the city capacity to take on additional debt out in the future. But that same, that same pattern, that same envelope, if you will, with the mill rate increase is the same as the, as the debt service increase. But I, I think the takeaway here, the important numbers at the bottom, one point zero two mills on average. Okay? Over the, over the twenty-three years. Next slide, please. Okay. So now that we've talked about what the mill rate, the average mill rate increase would be, now we're going to look at what the, what the, what the tax impact is in actual dollars. So again, in order to facilitate the conversation, what we've done is we're looking at what the impact will be in increments of a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. So as a reminder, assessed value is seventy percent of the market value of a home. So in order to make this scalable, what we did is we said, okay, for a hundred thousand dollars, what would the average tax increase be? And it would be a hundred dollars in the whole two, so a hundred and two dollars. Okay? And so if you know what the market value of your home would be for a hundred thousand of assessed value, that's a market value of about a hundred and forty-three thousand. If you, you, you know what your market value is, you divide that by point seven, you get an assessed value, and then you could scale up from this. So a home that has, has an assessed value of two hundred thousand would be, would be two oh four. Okay? And, and a house that was a three hundred thousand assessed value would be three hundred and six dollars on average for twenty years. Okay? To further help facilitate that conversation, the right-hand column that's shaded in green, we looked at what the median home value was in the city at the last revaluation. Okay? And that worked out to be a hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. So we said, okay, based on that median home, what would the tax increase be? And here, so that brings the average to a hundred and fifteen dollars a year on average. Right? If you go to the next slide. And again, to, to further help that conversation, if, you know, we, we were looking there at increments of assessed value. So that's a little bit complicated. Most of us know the, the market value of our home, not necessarily the assessed value. Here we flipped it and said, okay, what's, how does that, what does that mean for market value? So we looked at increments of twenty-five thousand dollars from one hundred to two hundred thousand dollars of market value, and what would that be? So a hundred thousand dollars of market value now would be seventy-one dollars and seven cents on average for twenty-three years. And then that in essence doubles when you go to two hundred thousand of, of market value. It's a hundred and forty-two dollars. You know, anybody at home trying to do multiplication themselves, that, that hundred and two dollars per hundred thousand, I'm rounding that off to the nearest dollar. It's actually one oh one, spot five three. So there's going to be a little bit of a difference with, for rounding purposes here. And we're trying to keep it as simple as possible and deal with whole numbers. But I, I think you get the idea. You could certainly scale it based on this for market value. All right. So now that was scenario one. So that was the best-case scenario. If, if the city receives the eighty-five percent reimbursement on the whole entire project mount, a higher project amount at a hundred and seventy-nine and a half million. But here, this would be more like the worst-case scenario. So here, the project cost increased to one seventy-nine and a half, but the state only reimbursed what they're currently are, 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 had agreed to, which is eighty-five percent up to one fifty-nine. So here are basically that twenty million dollars is, is all the city's share going forward. So this is our, our worst-case scenario. Okay? If you go to the first slide, thank you. So again, similar to what we did before, this is the financing plan under that option. You know, the, if the city's share in this instance would be, would be roughly forty-five million. Okay? And again, but the borrowing plan doesn't change. It's still being phased in with a series of three bond issues, trying to limit the near-term budgetary impact as much as possible. We'd still have a borrowing in March of this year to help reimburse the city for expenses incurred to date, and then for the beginning period of this upcoming twenty-two year that they, they talked about what the schedule may be. Here, under this scenario, in worst case, would be seventy-five point two million with, with interest over twenty-three years. Okay? You could go to the next slide. So then here again, similar, this is, this is a, to what I showed you earlier. This is just a summary. This is the existing debt plus that new debt. There's the seventy-five point two million at the bottom. And then what the, what the, what the total debt service would be for all of the capital projects. Again, it starts out gradually, four point two in the current year, increasing to a peak in two thousand and twenty-eight. In this case, it, it would be roughly ten million dollars of total debt service. But again, the, the, the pattern, if you will, the growth rate is, is higher because it's a, it's a larger amount. But the, but it, but again, we're attempting to phase it in to help limit it as much as possible. So if you go to the next slide. So now we'll get into the mill rate and then the tax impact. Okay? Similar to what we showed you before. So again, here, looking at the, at the bottom number, if, if the city was responsible for the full twenty million dollars, that would bring that mill rate impact to one point six four mills. Okay? Average, on average. So we go from one oh two to one point six four. Okay? Again, starts out gradually, peak year in two thousand and twenty-eight, and then declines after that. If you could go to the next slide. Thank you. So now this is the tax impact. So again, at per hundred thousand dollars of assessed value, it's a hundred and sixty-four dollars. So we went from one oh two to ones, to one sixty-four. Again, looking at just assessed value. And if you could go to.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I think they're trying to let Councilwoman Ruette logged out, and she's trying to log back in. I apologize for the confusion. All right. So go ahead. I'm sorry, Bill.
So, so again, so then what we did here is, you know, again, a hundred and sixty-four dollars would be a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. But again, I think, at least for myself anyway, I know the market value of my home better than to my assessed value. So thinking in those terms, with a market value of a hundred thousand dollars under this, under this scenario, it would be a hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-two cents on average. If we had a, if my, my home was worth two hundred thousand, that would in essence double, it'd be a hundred, I'll call it two hundred and thirty dollars on average. Okay? But I, I think, you know, and it, this was mentioned earlier, though. I mean, I think the logical question is, okay, that's great. When we originally approved the project, what was that number? So that number was two point zero four mills or two hundred and four dollars per a hundred thousand of assessed value. So now, even in the worst-case scenario, where there's twenty million dollars of additional cost with no additional reimbursement for that, for, for the higher amount, only eighty-five percent on the first one fifty-nine, we're still quite a bit lower at one sixty-four than where you were at two oh four in May of two thousand and twenty.
Right. All right. Questions for Mr. Lindsey? I know this is a lot to digest.
Yeah. Mayor and Bill, can that schedule of the debt service repayment be altered? So it said barring, we have a tremendous grant list growth year in two thousand and twenty-four, and we want to allocate a little bit more in order to lessen the impact down the line. Is that something we can do, or is that something we can't do?
So, um, I don't, if the grant, I'll try to answer it this way. If the grant was were to grow, right? Then that would, the mill rate impact and then the associated tax impact would come down. We took a very conservative approach in developing these numbers. We We assumed the current grand list going forward for twenty years, so no grand list growth at all.
Right.
So any grand, positive grand list growth that the city realizes is gonna reduce these numbers, okay? But, um, given that you do a revalue every five years, the ability to predict out into the future twenty years what the grand list would be really wasn't realistic. So we wanted to be conservative.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I'm just, like I said, if, you know, in three years, while, while we have that zero impact, if there's something we want to allocate to that debt service, then we can or we can't.
Well, you know, some of those strategies that we've used, um, and this is where both, uh, Mr. Lindsay and, um, Sandra Dawson have come in handy is when you sell a bond, when you sell your bonds, there's a premium, those premiums can be used um, to offset, uh, the costs of administration or, or, uh, the sales expenses, the referendum, uh, expenses, um, and interest. You know, and that's something that, uh, on an annual basis, when we sell those bonds, we make those decisions, you know? How will this best benefit the taxpayers to offset the impact? So what you're seeing here today is, you know, that snapshot in time, based on the information we have today, that this is roughly the impact. And I think, uh, the important thing, and I did pull, um, the presentation that was made back in May of twenty twenty, where the projected total debt service, um, P and I, and I think it was a higher interest rate that we were calculating back then, or maybe it wasn't. You know, it was a total of a hundred and six million, four ninety-six, four, a hundred and sixty million. You know, today, what you're seeing for the school is that seventy-five million, two twenty-five, five fifty-four. And I think that speaks to that succinct message to the taxpayers, that even with this additional twenty million dollars of investment, to get the school that our students deserve and our families need, um, we're still coming in under projection for what was, um, put up to vote in November of twenty twenty.
Yep. And I think it's also important to say, while we're, we're on the topic of, of selling those bonds and reducing those, that, that this board and, and, and the council are aware of the decisions that come up during the budget cycle that could impact that bond rating. So we, we need to be cognizant that if we want to help, you know, ease the pain on this project of, you know, when it comes to, to mill rate impact, that, that we're watching, um, those things that can downgrade our bond rating. And then we don't have opportunities to, you know, continue to, um, you know, help, help the mill rate impact the taxpayers. So just something to be cognizant of.
Very well said, yeah. And those are the things that over the last three or four years, the Board of Finance has been paying very close attention to. You know, when we, uh, establish a policy on what our fund balance should be, maintaining that fund balance, because those are the things that as we go through the bond reading process, that that's, those are the things they're looking at, you know? How do you use your fund balance? You know, are you, um, well-positioned to absorb, uh, any catastrophic budgetary, um, changes, um, which we have in the last eight years with the state budget crisis a few years back? I think Bill held his hand through, held, held our hand through some of that. Um, so you're right, those are the important things. The goal is the best bond rating, you know, borrow at the right time, so we're getting the best interest rate, um, and building, um, the school that, um, that was envisioned when it was presented to the voters. Are there any questions, um, for Mr. Lindsay? I can't see any may participate, oh, they can, no questions to the screen? All right, I'm gonna let you off the hook. Thank you, Bill, for coming out for this meeting, I truly appreciate it. All right, so if there are no other questions for review and discussion of the resolution, then I'm gonna move into the motion, which is item number three on the, um, agenda. And I'll read the motion that will include, uh, the date for the referendum. So the motion I am calling is, uh, I'll entertain a motion by the Board of Finance to adopt Resolution Number One Four Three Two Two Three, Amending the Resolution Authorizing an Appropriation of a Hundred and Fifty-Nine Million, Five Hundred and Seventy-Five Thousand for the construction of the new high school, a new middle school, new central administrative offices, and the demolition of the existing Torrington High School, and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-nine million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand. Therefore, by approving an additional twenty million dollar appropriation and bond authorization, and recommending approval of the Resolution Number One Four Three Two Two Three to the Board of Councilmen. I don't need to put for this board the date of the referendum, that's for the council to approve.
Submove there.
Thank you, Council, uh, Board Member Bayes.
Okay.
And seconded by Mr. Wright. And the floor is open for any questions on the motion for the Board of Finance.
So, how will the, would a, the referendum question read?
So this is, um, is Sandy Dawson still on this call?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so, um, and the attached, the documents that were attached to the referendum or the, um, agenda, it does, that's how the question would read, Sandy, did you wanna, did you hear the question?
I did, so if in the handout you go to the resolutions for the, um, council, on page six, there's a ballot label on how the question would read on the ballot. And if you're not there, I can just read it to you. It says, shall the City of Torrington appropriate an additional twenty million dollars, parentheses, thereby increasing the appropriation and bond authorization approved by the voters on November third, twenty twenty, from one hundred fifty-nine million, five hundred seventy-five thousand to one hundred seventy-nine million, five hundred seventy-five thousand, closed paren. For the construction of a new high school, a new middle school, a new central administrative office, and for the demolition of the existing Torrington High School, and authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds and notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation, provided the amount of such bonds and notes shall be reduced by grants and other sources of funds received for the project. Open parentheses, currently expected to be one hundred thirty-three million, seven hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-one dollars.
So that is how the ballot will read. I know, it is, I know.
That's legally, it has to-
Statute, that's how it has to-
Yes.
The explanation.
And this is where that explanatory text, and I know that the Building Committee in November twenty twenty, there was a, a parent PAC or activist group that was, uh, mobilized. You know, this is where they distill that to that very succinct, you know, this is why, this, this is why the cost has escalated. And this is still falling within the appropriation, or the projected net cost to the taxpayers. It is, it's wordy, I agree with you.
Well, at least it's a yes vote to approve it.
Yeah, it's a yes or no. There's no multiple choice. Yes. Uh, Mr. Boshka, you have a question?
Yeah, did, would, did the resolution say expected revenues would be one hundred thirty-three million?
Expected funds for, excuse me, it's, that will, will reduce the amount of bonds that are issued, um, reduced by grants and other sources of funds received for the project, which is currently expected to be one hundred thirty-three million, seven fifty-nine, seven thirty-one. That's the eighty-five percent of the one hundred fifty-nine million less the two point two, two point one million anticipated to be ineligible.
Okay.
And it, and it just says, and other sources of funds, the reason that's in there is, you know, if all of a sudden, uh, you had the opportunity to take in another grant, you know, like a federal grant or something, that you would, um, you would, you know, you could apply it to this project.
In the first referendum question, we did not include any anticipated revenue or grants that were gonna be a cost offset. I think the reason there was an interest in seeing it included in this question is because, uh, so much in the promotion of the last or advocacy for the last vote centered around that seventy-four million.
And if I could-
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, if I could interrupt, one of the reasons it wasn't put into the first question is there hadn't been any legislation yet passed, the project hadn't been approved for the state for any grant reimbursement. At this time, when it says currently expected to be, that is what the legislature has approved for the expected grant amount. So it's already gone through legislative process.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
Other questions on the motion? I, and I'm going to call the motion, uh, to the Board of Finance, only all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so the next motion is for the Board of Councilmen. Uh, and this, and I'll, um, I'll modify, Sandy, it's okay if I modify it to add the referendum date, is that okay?
Uh, sure, you, yes, because you, you know, the, the agenda item just says, as well as establishing the date and other matters, and those are in the resolution, so if you want to go ahead and just add, uh, the two other matters, which is establishing the referendum date for January twenty-fifth, and then the other matter is approving this explanatory text.
Okay, good, all right. So I'll read the motion, uh, uh, entertaining motion, excuse me, um, by the Board of Councilmen to adopt Resolution One Four Three Two Two Four, Amending Resolution, A Resolution Authorizing Appropriation of One Fifty-Nine, Five Seventy-Five Million for the construction of new high school, new middle school, new central office, and demolition of the existing Torrington High School, and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-nine million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand. Therefore, by approving an additional twenty million appropriation and bond authorization, as well as establishing a date for referendum to be January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, and, uh, and approving, uh, and authorizing the, um, uh, creation of explanatory text. Do you have a motion? Thank you, Councilwoman Hona.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Kevin Arrow. Floor is open for questions or comments. Questions, yes.
Like Mrs. Pesky brought up about the, the challenges with the actual wording of the referendum question, the explanatory text is very helpful. But the only way people can get that really is if they requested or get an absentee ballot and have it go with them. Is there any other ways that we have power to be able to get that information? I mean, other than have sort of a parent group, but as this body, is there any?
So we can, um, and we did the, uh, we mailed, um, explanatory texts with the referendum question prior to the building, the school construction, uh, when we did the road, uh, and sidewalk. So we can mail an explanatory text or pamphlet with explanatory text to all registered voters.
Um, I don't know if this is, is this, this is not, it's getting late. Is there gonna be a discussion about how we are going to message this to the people of Torrington, um, in a deliberate, you know?
Some of these guys.
In, in terms of utilizing the press, utilizing any websites, et cetera, or not?
So-
Not tonight, certainly just-
Right.
Say that, but-
So two things, um, the explanatory text is a legal document.
Yep.
Corporation Council, um, has to work with, um, the development of that explanatory text. We certainly would work with, um, Mr. Arum and Mr. Lungabuko.
Bond Council as well.
Uh, will prepare the text, Bond Council can, uh, give us some insight, Corporation Council can finalize it. We can bring it back to the council for, um, final approval.
Yeah, because what I'm thinking about, Mary, is, you know, again, one of the, one of the key drivers, one, one of the key things that we're trying to emphasize here is that this additional money is simply to continue with the plan as originally, as originally approved by the Board of Torrington, and that has to do with keeping discrete student populations discreet. And the consequence of not having the money to do that, and what that would look like in a simplified floor plan, you, you know? The pass and not the pass, I think might be very helpful for our voters to see what will happen if they don't approve.
So that's the other piece. So the explanatory text is that unbiased, non-advocacy, facts-only documents that we can put out utilizing taxpayers' resources.
Yes.
For advocacy, um, no taxpayer resources can be expended. Um, that's where that, uh, A PAC or an advocacy group comes in handy. Um, any expenses, um, for that have to be outside of taxpayers' resources.
Again, I know, I know we're taking a lot of time, without including cares, is simply presenting an, an A floor plan and a B floor plan, is that necessarily advocacy saying, here's what you're gonna get without the twenty million?
I would say that was fact.
What you're gonna get with the twenty million, which is what you originally approved a year ago.
I would say that was fact, that's, that's very factual. Does the Building Committee have a website or, um, anything that you put out?
Uh, we have a website, Bruce Lee, and what we were just actually discussing.
Discussing that, yeah.
We, uh, we're gonna get a, a better setup so everyone could access minutes and agendas in floor plans and, and things like that, and we need to do it pronto.
Just very, very simple.
Yes.
We, we have it, but it's in a different area and we have to move it.
It's very tough.
Tough to get, so we're gonna put it back.
We can certainly take this off, right, but I would like one point of water here, I would like three roll call vote, if you would, Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely, sure. Other questions or comments before I call the motion? All right, again, to the council members, um, and Councilman Kevin Arrow has asked for a roll call. Um, starting to my left, Councilman Kevin Arrow.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman, uh, Manichia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hona.
Yeah.
Councilman Waldron.
Yes.
Uh, to the screen, uh, Councilwoman Ruette.
She's two down.
Councilwoman Ruette, do you vote?
She's saying something, we just can't hear her. She's trying, how about a thumbs up?
Can you do a thumbs up or a thumbs down in favor? Thumbs up. All right, um, motion passes. Right, there being no further business before this joint meeting, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Just wanna, I just wanna thank both boards for their support of this, and we want to thank the mayor, being proactive, getting this very quickly, which was tough, and we want to thank Bill and Ms., Ms. Dawson, well, their timely work in getting this to the, both groups quickly, we really appreciate that. And, uh, we're gonna, hopefully, this passes, and we'll bring something, as I said, when the, when the last referendum passed, the sun shines on Torrington a lot, you know, begins.
Elaborate, huh?
Yes.
When you're sending those, um, expressions of gratitude, our city clerk's office and our registrar of voters, who are also really under the pressures as of tonight, to get this in the newspaper in a timely manner and start ordering the ballots to be printed, so.
Sorry for that missing.
Yeah.
Carolyn.
All right. You're gonna lick envelopes with them, Ed, right? Let's use it. You were gonna lick envelopes with them earlier, that's what you said, that'll be done, I hope you guys don't worry.
All right, I'm gonna call the motion, the motion to adjourn.
Submove.
I heard, all right, uh, I heard Councilman Kevin Arrow, I heard adjourn. Councilman, Mr. Bayes.
See, I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned for the special meeting, council members, particularly state for the final agenda.
Can you hear me now, Mayor?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Yeah, I think the problem was I was still on the phone with you, so apologize.
The, the timer.
I want a snack, going further.
You know, we brought a snack.
Oh, no, actually, this, this is, uh, this is-
We don't use it.
Well, I haven't used it. Well, there's no way around it, I mean, I gotta get this thing done, I mean, to me, it's just Pennywise's compliment. You can't spend a hundred and fifty-nine million and get basically a school that's appropriate for Bridgeport or Waterbury, I mean, that's not gonna help us.
That's more- Thank you. All right, so this is a regular meeting of the City Council and WPCA. Uh, for the record, it is still December twentieth, we are still in the auditorium. Uh, participating via Zoom is, um, Councilwoman Ruette, uh, council members Waldron, Hona, Manichia, and Kevin Arrow are in the auditorium, and it is now eight eleven PM. I'll move right into, uh, Agenda Item Number One. I'll entertain a motion to- I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section four E of the City Council WPCA meeting rules. Thank you, Councilman Waldron. And second by Councilman Manichia, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are open to the public, is there anyone from the public wishing to address the council at this time? Okay, and to, I'll entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from October eighteen to twenty twenty-one.
Moved to.
Thank you, I heard Councilman Waldron, second by Councilman Cavanaro. All in favor, or excuse me.
Aye.
Any questions on the minutes? Hearing no questions, and just reminding our members who were not sworn in at that time. Yes. Yeah, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions go to Councilwoman Hona and Councilman Manichia. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from December sixth.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Hona. Uh, questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving into item four, I'll entertain a motion to accept the mayor's reapportment, reappointment of Lorraine Pesky and Christopher Anderson to the Board of Finance for a six-year term. To expire December fifteenth, twenty twenty-seven.
Moved.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ruette. Uh, questions on the motion? I would just add that these are excellent Board of Finance members, and I'm grateful that they've agreed to sign on for six more years. So I'll call that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I will also say that Mr. Anderson was pleased to have five years of rest, five days of rest.
Is it true it's time deducted from health?
Yeah, really, yeah. Item six, excuse me, five, I will entertain a motion to release the sewer use lanes in Corporation Council's memo dated December twentieth, twenty-one.
So moved.
Thank you, Council Waldron, and second by Councilman Cavanaro. Uh, questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item six, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize tax refunds indicated unless dated December twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, second by Councilman Manichia. Uh, questions on the memo or the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Right time.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer usage refunds indicated unless dated twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Hona. Um, questions on the motion or the list? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item eight, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the facilities manager. To authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to enter a bid contract with First Line Services of Cromwell, Connecticut. For an on-call miscellaneous electrical services and repairs for the city. This contract will be in effect from January twenty twenty-two to June thirty-one. No, June thirtieth. It's only thirty days of June, right?
Thirty.
June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, the rates that are submitted are for the journeyman rate of fifty dollars an hour and apprentice at fifty dollars an hour.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
I'll second.
Thank you, I heard Councilman Manichia. Must be that two-second delay in the calls. Um, questions on the motion?
Uh, only one, Mayor.
Yes.
Just fifty dollars an hour is the correct going rate for apprentice electricians?
So, yes, and Jamie Sikora, our facilities management director.
A simple nod will do this, yes.
So.
A simple nod will do. Oh, fifty dollars an hour for apprentice electricians, that's the going rate?
Yeah.
It is, okay, thank you.
And this was in accordance with the bid, that's what they submitted for bid. Uh, other questions on the motion?
Was this in a previous contract and we just re, or extended it?
Uh, Jamie, no, this is a new, right? Yeah, because I want to say Turi was our former.
No.
Wasn't Turi?
No. Uh, Jamie Sikora, facilities manager for the city. Uh, the current bid, we did not renew back in July, uh. July, not July, yes, July. Um, we, we're having a little issues with the previous electrician, which was not Turi, it was Viking Electric. So we did not go back out, and now it's just becoming more of a challenge to get any electrician with COVID and not having enough employees and workers. So we decided now it's becoming such a burden to get anybody to do anything, that we need to go back out to a bid, which is why we're doing it mid-year. And this is an eighteen-month contract, so it'll finish out this year and continue all through next year.
Insert.
Yeah, I guess, though there were no locals, I wanted this.
Only, only two people responded.
Were they all notified that this was an open contract?
It went out to the public, we, you know, everybody knew that regulators done any really bad, and I was shocked it was only two.
Fair enough, news you lose, okay, thank you.
And I do think that that is, I appreciate the fact that you raised labor issues when we talk about the long-term impact of this pandemic. That is part of it.
Yeah.
You know, all of those, those services and contractors, they're just not out there anymore.
Up and down the line disruptions, you know.
I can't even get three bids when I go out to ask for things like for votes. Nobody wants to respond, it's, it's horrible, so.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item nine, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilman Manichia. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, I don't, I didn't see any department heads on the call, right? So I'll stick to who's here. Jamie, anything else that you wanted to add this evening? Mention, okay. Uh, city clerk's office. I know, I saw, yes, I saw your all call for some assistance. I'll reach out to Mr. Arum, there's a draft of explanatory text that we had put together. Um, a year ago, when the referendum was first, the first referendum was planned, so we'll try to recycle that and tweak it. Okay. And that has to go to them?
It doesn't have to.
Okay.
It's the courtesy.
Okay.
It's nice having them behind me.
And the licking of the envelopes? All right.
They get apprentice wages, though.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, and, and when I say the clerk's office and the registrars are under the gun there. As you just heard, it's literally turned this around in twenty-four and forty-eight hours. So thank you, Carol. Corporation Council.
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to item ten, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you, I heard Cavanaro and I heard Waldron, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Uh, all right, starting, starting on the call, Ian, is there anything you wanted to add this evening?
No, just Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Um, I got a little sore throat going, so I didn't think anybody wanted to see me tonight. I'm sorry about the disruption in the, in the sound, um, can you hear me?
If you can.
Okay, all right, all right, and that's it, just, you know, have a healthy and safe holiday.
Thank you. To my left, Councilman Cavanaro.
Uh, just, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, and the department heads who have moved so quickly and expeditiously to try to. Maintain forward momentum on this high school project. I, I know it's come up suddenly and, um, your work's appreciated, thank you.
No, thank you. Um, Councilman Manichia.
Just, uh, Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hona.
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Carol and Heather, for all of your work you've done so far. Trying to get this referendum moving quickly, I certainly do appreciate it, and there is already. Basically, the same group of parents has stepped forward and said, and started working on messaging, if this were, you know, if we were able to go to referendum tonight. They're ready to go, and it would be really helpful, I think, to what Mr. Bayes had to say, that we're all speaking sort of with. One voice and encouraging people that this is the right thing, especially can as private citizens, um, to, to. You know, to support this and to come out, and I'm sure the turnout will probably be low, so we want to make sure that anybody that's supportive can get out.
Start saying the no Venus for no snow on the twenty-fifth.
And, uh, it kind of made me think that, you know, dealing with, hearing from the building committee about all of these overruns, and then. And marching in the parade, seeing the new housing project kind of come up over the back of the parkade, and you realize how massive it is. Uh, I don't know, Mayor, if you've heard anything, or if they can, you know, come to a future meeting and kind of present to us, I'm curious whether. They are on track with time and labor and materials, or if they're experiencing overruns. Well.
They are, uh, ahead of time, yes, cost escalation, but they're managing. Uh, they did reach out to the city to, um, talk about some, um, some of the areas where they do have overruns. I certainly can ask them to come to the council and just do a, a brief presentation, update where they are. Sure, yeah, uh, their completion date is summer of twenty twenty-two. Um, and they want to start getting leases and tenants in and hope to have occupancy by December of twenty twenty-two. So, um, I think on time, but budget everywhere is, is always the issue, so I'll ask them. Councilman Waldron.
Well, just, uh, happy holidays to everybody, and let's hope, uh, next year is, uh, better than the last year, so.
Yes, last two years.
So.
I agree.
Mayor, one, just one last point, as far as the discussions moving forward on how to package and present thi- this referendum. Uh, I don't know if other people feel this, but I think in terms of what we saw as far as, you know, what the, um, what the middle rate is going to do and all that. Maybe just think about, instead of selling it on a yearly, yearly cost, on a monthly cost, you know, what's that going to, for you to get a hundred and eighty million dollar. Brand-new high school is going to cost average person about twelve bucks a month, you know, and I think maybe if.
I think that was something.
Try to present that.
Yeah, I, I do believe that, so, and this is where there's that fine line of using taxpayers' resources. For, because that becomes advocacy.
That becomes advocacy, no, I realize that, but at least in terms of talking about the project, and as people go forward and they talk in public, I think just for the.
And that's one of the reasons. Yeah, and that was one of the reasons that we have these prepared, and then obviously the Board of Finance is always asking, okay, let me see this.
Yeah.
Um, but that's the beauty of having this, because then those advocacy groups. Can very easily go on here and they can distill that, and they could break it down to, you know, if your taxes are paid through your tax escrow with your mortgage. You know, how much can you expect your monthly mortgage payment to go up? Um, so those are the, you know, the finer details that.
If you wanted to use the monthly cost, I mean, you can compare what the monthly cost would be. Under the original referendum, one hundred fifty-nine thousand. Yeah. Versus, or versus what it would cost, no, it's just, this is two different scenarios.
Oh, I see, I see.
And you're not supporting one or the other.
It's almost its pennies at that point.
And if I could just throw this out, I mean, those are, those are numbers that, you know, again, snapshot in time. You know, all things being equal, there's no grand list growth, uh, there's no, uh, extraordinary, uh, uh, operating budget increases. Then this is what it would be. Um, so even that, I think, you have to tread lightly. I think the numbers, um, that I really, um, looked at and zeroed in on is that total cost. Um, and even those are based on an assumption that, you know, we're going to be bonding these. Um, these projects out at, uh, was it, he had two and a quarter percent and. So I can never put my finger right on the page and I'm speaking of. So he was looking at, uh, you know, three-point-four-three percent, four-point-two-six percent. You know, five-point-zero-nine percent, I mean, even those numbers, those are projections, there's nothing cast in stone on any of that. So that's where you get into that gray area where if you say too much about the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I think, I think the narrative that I heard this evening was cost escalation and the scope. You know, that we need a larger building because we have more students. You know, and even with all of that, and with very conservative interest numbers. We're still looking at thirty million dollars less.
Yeah.
Um, than what the voters thought they would be paying in November of twenty twenty.
If I understand, worst-case scenario, if we don't get any reverse, but if I understand what Mark Bushell is going, we're still, we're still, at the end of the day, paying.
Thirty million.
Twenty-four, twenty-five percent of, we're essentially getting seventy-five percent perhaps.
Yes.
Bonding, which, you know.
Yes. Yeah, and I think that's the narrative that will resonate with your taxpayers. What is it going to cost? Um, you know, the parents and the teachers and, um, coaches are all going to say, what does it look like? You know, everybody else is going to say, what does it cost? So. All right, um, I really have nothing else to add this evening, other than to express my gratitude to all of you for your patience and your. Um, commitment to serving, um, the citizens of Torrington. I wish you all a very Merry Christmas, I will see you after the New Year. Um, there, oh, there is one agenda, more agenda item, uh, I will introduce a motion to open the meeting to the public for comment on agenda items only. Thank you, Councilman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Hona, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The public.
Sharon Waldron, I appreciate you for all of your work on the school project. You put the initiative yourself, has been included in the name of the meeting, all of the background with the university itself. And also Merry Christmas to Carol.
Thank you. I think once you're a councilwoman, we can always call you councilwoman. Yes, you like that, it's like the president, right? All right, uh, there being no further business before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Ruette, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned, thank you and good night.
I just found out, I did not know, yeah.